Good morning. It's 9:00 a.m. and I'll call to order the May 18th meeting of the Seline County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wiest?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here. Please join me for the flag salute and remain standing in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If everyone can make sure that all microphones and other electronic devices are muted when you are not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly, I would appreciate it. Now if Brad, our IT director, could instruct everyone on how to raise their hands in the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, no one has joined the Zoom meeting at this time.
Okay, thank you, Brad. At this portion of the meeting, citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items not on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who'd wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll move into, we have a consent agenda, approve the consent agenda. Are there any commissioners who wish to amend or take items from the consent agenda? The, we'll move to approve the prior minutes as presented, approval of tax rule adjustment, approval of accounts payable, and approval of public forum agenda as required. Hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved. At this time, we will, presentations, flooding update. Item one.
Good morning, commissioners. I have a little update on the weather that impacted Seline County over the weekend. So you're aware of what going on. This here is a picture of the flood map of Seline County, some informational items. Seline County drains approximately 23,000 square miles of land area. And for reference, that's about the size of the state of West Virginia. Next slide, please. This flooding was different. This flooding was localized rain that fell in huge amounts. Here's a sheet from the Cocoa Roz website that shows the rainfall amounts for May 16th. Next slide, please. This is the area that was impacted through the flooding area. And it also spreads a little bit farther east, about all the way over to Solomon, after getting out and reviewing the damage yesterday. Next slide, please. This shows just some of the types of damages that we see occurring. Some of this very water over the road. This was probably countywide. Ninety percent of the damage was in that red area. Next slide, please. This is also with the high winds and the soils are just so saturated that when you get winds and saturated soil and high winds, we get a lot of tree and debris removal. Next slide, please. This is Simpson Road looking south from the interstate. This is one of the reasons that we have the advisory, you know, turn around, don't drown. When the water is covering the road, you don't know what isn't there. Next slide, please. So this is a picture of the water going down. This doesn't show it, but that's probably about a two-foot drop. From there, the culvert's exposed, and this is probably about a mile stretch. Next slide, please. And we've, we're already out there starting the recovery efforts. We have multiple motor graders, the ones we have in the yard, we sent out to get the roads passable. Next slide, please. This is just water that tops the road. There's probably about a foot drop there. We'll start the recovery efforts here soon as we can get some dry weather. Next slide, please. This is on top of the interstate looking east towards the city of Solomon. Typically, you would see this type of flooding occurring when the rivers break out. The rivers are still in their banks. This is, it just kind of shows you how much water fell in a short amount of time. Next slide, please. This is up on Headville Road. We did have a slide area. The road is closed. We're currently up there trying to repair that. Next slide, please. This just shows you the trash and debris removal that are in all of the cricks. There's, this is on State Street. There's a bridge just to the right of that photo. We will go down there and remove that. Next slide, please. That's the end of the presentation. We are starting the efforts to make the roads passable. But with the weather pattern and the conditions that we're in, we probably, and we'll not be hauling any aggregates. We've seen these patterns before where we just go out and start immediately repairing these things and then get another two or three-inch rain, and then all of it goes away. So we are making attempts to make the roads passable with the motor graders. And then next week, if the weather pattern sets in, then we'll begin hauling aggregates. And I'd entertain any questions that you might have. Just taking a guess at it right now, I'd say $150,000 to $200,000 worth of damage. That includes manpower and materials.
Okay. Any questions or comments by the public, by commissioners? Okay. Thank you, Darren, for a very good update. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to action items. Item number one.
Resolution 21-2331, proclamation of a state of local disaster emergency for Seline County. Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Commissioner. I am here to ask for a declaration for state of local disaster for the flooding that occurred on Saturday and into Sunday evening. As you can see, thanks to Darren's presentation, there was quite a significant amount of damage to the north-central region of the county. The grounds are still heavily saturated from the two to eight inches of rain that we had received over the weekend. The National Weather Service is also predicting that we will continue to have weather accumulate throughout this week. And with the heavily saturated grounds already, it won't take as much to flood. Like Darren said, this isn't our typical flooding where it's river-associated. This is just sheerly from the amount of rainfall that fell over the weekend. As of right now, we have made some significant efforts to mitigate the need to respond. So our timeframe, if needed, is a lot shorter. We have coordinated with Roden Bridge and the Expo Center to set up sandbagging operations like we did back in 2019, if needed. The state has also declared a state of local disaster for the entire state of Kansas, which means that they have actually converted our COVID shelter since we don't have anyone staying there right now as a displacement shelter, if anyone needs it, for those that are losing property or damage to their homes due to the floodwaters. Any questions?
Quick question, the sandbagging, is that something that is set up at this time or you will be setting it up possibly?
It will be set up depending on the National Weather Service's rate of rainfall.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Michelle, with the state and local resolutions for a disaster, does that free up or make any FEMA monies available at this time or does it take something on a national level?
It would meet this, it would require the state to meet their threshold for damage. As of right now, they're still gathering estimates. I do know that legislation is heavily advocating for an SBA loan to be incorporated into this disaster declaration. So yesterday, they were inquiring on numbers of businesses and homes that have damage or loss of property due to flooding.
Okay. Any other questions or comments by the commissioner? Any comments or questions by the public? Are there any on the Zoom? Seeing none, I will bring it back to commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, let's see if I still remember how to do this. I move we approve the proclamation of a state of local disaster emergency for Seline County.
I second that. Are there any further comments? If not, I'll, been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution Number 21-2331, proclamation of a state of local disaster emergency for Seline County. Are there any further comments? If not, I'll call for a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wiest?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Michelle, if I might ask you a question, quick question unrelated to this disaster thing. But a couple of weeks ago, when we had the tornado threat here in Salina and the sirens sounded, who gives, is that the National Weather Service that starts the sirens or how does that process work?
So setting them off locally or the tornado warning?
In the city of Salina.
It is a collaboration between Salina Dispatch and Emergency Management.
And who shuts them off?
They shut themselves off. They only sound for a three-minute period.
I see. Okay. Well, I've had people ask, and I'm just curious and I'm not, wasn't well ventured on what's going on there. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. We will move to item number two.
RFA 164-21 and Resolution 21-2320, appointment of the county appraiser, Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Good morning, Philip.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So county appraisers are a unique position in that they are appointed statutorily for a four-year term by resolution. That four-year term ends and begins in the odd-numbered years, and this is one such year. So we need to take action to have us a county appraiser prior to July 1 of this year. It is my recommendation, after speaking with our existing county appraiser, that we reappoint Mr. Sean Robertson for another four-year term. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about that.
Okay. Any questions at all? Any comments? I just want to say that it's like, I commend you for reappointing and bringing Mr. Robertson back in front of us because I feel that he has done a fabulous job on keeping the values at a point where they're consistently right along with what the values have been and the sales and everything else. So I want to thank you for applying for another four years. Are there any comments? Any comments by the public? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution Number 21-2320 and reappoint Sean Robertson as county appraiser for a four-year term beginning July 1, 2021.
I second the motion. It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA Number 164-21 and Resolution Number 21-23020, appointment of the county appraiser. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wiest?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Congratulations, Sean.
Yes.
Congratulations, Sean.
Item number three.
RFA 165-21, inmate housing contract with Dickinson County Sheriff, Roger Solden, Sheriff.
Good morning, Mr. Solden.
Good morning. Well, I'm going to make this short.
Thank you.
Because I had a conversation with the Dickinson County Sheriff this morning, and their project is behind the timeline that they expected. I'd met with him last month, and he thought he was going to be ready to go ahead, and he's not. And they're having trouble finding staff. So he doesn't feel comfortable proceeding at this time. So I guess it's more just to let you know that it's coming at some point. It'd be a great thing for us because it's a much shorter trip than going to Washington County and cloud. But at this time, I just ask you to take no move, no action on this, this one.
Okay.
Roger, I have a question for you in regards to Dickinson County because they haven't been a part of this program forever. What is the capabilities or the level of jail cells that they are going to have available versus what they had before?
When I talked to them last, they were running right around 20 inmates. They're going to have 80 beds. Of course, I don't know what their population might be coming, seeing the little bit of an increase too, but...
But what is going to, you're talking about they'll be able to hound 20 more people than they've been handling or...
Probably, yeah, that's what he was thinking was, they could maybe take up to 20, which...
That'd be a nice load of...
It would be nice to take them there and clear up the Washington County, but...
Yes.
Thank you.
At some point, we'd like to see it, but apparently they've had some issues come up, and they are not prepared, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, there will be no action taken in regards to item number three. At this time, we'll move into informational items. Item number one.
2022 budget appropriation request for Natural Resource Conservation District, Diana Harden, district manager.
Good morning, Diana.
Good morning. Probably the shortest person here today, so. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Diana Harden, and I am the district manager for the Seline County Conservation District. I was hoping to have some of my board members here today, but with all the rain that we've seen, they are cattle producers, and so they've been fixing fence and stuff like that, trying to keep their cattle in. Part of my job is to educate people of all ages about the stewardship practices and the wise use of natural resources. My first year on the job last year was interesting, to say the least. I started right before COVID hit, and then all hell broke loose, basically. So in a normal year, we would help with the Water Festival out at Webster Conference Center, Ag Awareness Days, and other field days throughout the county, helping educate elementary-age children on the natural resources of our land and stuff. Envirothon is a natural resource competition for high school students. And with the last two years, the way they have been, everything's been virtual, so we haven't really been able to help with that much either. We also provide available information and administer state cost share programs. There's, we get money each year from the state to help fix waterways or terraces, diversions, failed septic tanks, abandoned well pluggings that we do. Those are just kind of the main things that we help with within the county. This last year, we brought in, through the cost share money, we brought in over $630,000 worth of money to help fix those concerns within the county. The state aid to conservation districts will match up to $25,000 allocated by the county commissioners. These funds allow us to maintain our local office, purchase office supplies, and office supplies and equipment, and carry out information and education activities, provide liaison between landowners and federal and state local programs, and keep landowners advised of conservation problems and solution. And we also provide technical assistance to NRCS within our office. This year, the Board of Supervisors is asking for, is requesting a budget of $23,000 along with the Oliver Hagg Education Funds of $4,500. At this time, the Conservation District employs two full-time employees, myself and a conservation technician. My salary is funded through the county as well as funds from the state. The county funds provide the ability to support my salary and benefits such as capers. The conservation technician, his salary is provided by state technical assistance funds. And he provides technical assistance in the field in order to plan, design, and monitor conservation plans, such as the terraces and waterways. We are in the process of hiring a full-time soil health specialist, and his salary, his or her salary will be supported by the state technical funds as well. We have two no-till drills available for rental. We charge a small amount to producers that use it, but we're providing a vital service to the county in order to introduce and promote the no-till conservation practices. The services we provide are not available through the private sector or through other agencies or organizations. The state cost your money that we get is, it's structured in such a way that no other organization has that. The money comes from the legislatures to the Kansas Department of Ag, to the Division of Conservation, to us. There are several programs that wouldn't be available in the county without the Conservation District being here. So we thank you for your consideration and your time. And at this time, I would entertain any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, I have a question, and maybe the county administrator might need to answer this one. On the county funding part, the general fund and then the other funds, are the other funds, would that be the Oliver Hagg Fund that that comes out of?
Yeah, that's, they do receive some funds from Hagg for support of their educational mission as well as the general fund, yeah.
Yeah. It's my understanding that in Oliver Hagg's will, it was stated that his wishes were that money from his ground or whatever be used for conservation education within Seline County. And so that's what we, that's part of what we request every year, so.
Okay. And I had a quick question.
Yeah.
Is that, went to a meeting on Sunday night, I think it was, and about the NHA, the National Heritage Association, and I don't know if you're familiar with it at all. But anyway, after reading a lot about what you guys do, and I'm thinking of what they're proposing and going out and taking land, I didn't know if you guys are in supportive of that.
I, myself, do not know much about NHA, so I don't honestly feel comfortable answering that question. I apologize.
No, no, no problem. I just wanted to ask that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. And we'll look at this coming down the road.
All right. Thank you.
You bet. Okay. Item number two. And just a quick deal here. I just want to say that in respect for everybody that we have a lot going on this morning, if we could kind of, I don't want people to get up here and read everything that there is posted because we've already read it. If you hit your highlights and keep it, try and keep it under 10 minutes or so, that way we could get through everybody's timeframe. Okay? Thank you. I just wanted to mention that.
2022 budget appropriation request for Salina Chamber of Commerce, Eric Brown, Executive Director.
And Mr. Eric, that's why I wanted to say this before you got up here. Okay.
Chairman Sparks, commissioners, I didn't know if that was a direct pot shot or that was... No, thank you again. Eric Brown, I'm the President and CEO of the Salina Chamber of Commerce, in front of you today, asking, requesting $35,000 for our budget, specifically $5,000 to our Military Affairs Council and $30,000 to support our economic development efforts as part of the Salina, Seline County Economic Development Team. To give you a little bit of an update right now, we are at 10 employees, including myself. And there has been a lot of change in the last year. You guys have been living it. The county has all of a sudden taken on a little bit of a different role than what we have historically seen. And I thank you for also partnering us, with us in the CARES Act funding. We were able to, through those funds, we're able to put grants out to 163 different businesses when they needed the most, when they needed it the most in 2020. So thank you for that. Couple of the highlights here for you all. You do obviously have the letter and the list of things that we are engaged with on the economic development side in Seline County. Imagine Salina is one to highlight. It's our talent attraction, talent retention effort. And that's important because we are back at 3.5% unemployment as of March. That is pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic, we're at 3.3%. So we are almost back to that full, or that unemployment number previous to the pandemic. Some other highlights there, 91.5% of our workforce both live and work in Seline County. We have approximately 6,300 workers who commute in from outside the region into our county. And then another 2,200 that live here in our county and actually commute out to, for employment opportunities. So our labor basin is about 27,500 people, give or take, in Seline County. So as you can see, I think we have somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,500 open jobs currently. Those numbers are part of the reason why the chamber does so much in workforce development to try to fill those jobs. So that's a big piece. The other thing, last week, you all heard a housing discussion or had a housing presentation from the city. That's another piece that we find ourselves doing a lot of work and a lot of research and working with the state government as well and the Kansas Housing Resource Commission to try to find and help find solutions. So thank you for your work on that. And then the other piece that's really affecting employment as well is childcare. And that is another piece that we are working diligently with Childcare Way of Kansas, which is the state level, and also the Kansas Department of Commerce and other state entities as we try to solve that problem as well to the best of our ability. We're also doing, continue to do our Project Open, which is our basic education, business education, and also we have revolving loan fund. So we continue to put loans out and help small businesses and startups and even businesses that may be looking at the second phase of their operations. So those are just a few of the highlights that we continue to do. And we found ourselves in the last year, much like you all, looking at SBA and trying to understand all of those programs and trying to do our best. And we are not quite out of the SBA woodwork yet. But those are just a few of those pieces that we, how we support businesses here at the local level. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions by commissioners?
I think I have more of a comment. I wanted to thank you, Eric, and the chamber for assisting the county with the CARES Act and doing all the heavy lifting there. You took quite a bit off our plate and managed it very well, so thank you so much.
We appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Great job on administering all those funds out there. Good job, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you all.
You bet. Item number three.
2022 budget appropriation request for Central Kansas Mental Health, Kathy Mordger, Director.
And here's the one we need to talk on time.
Yes, okay.
Good morning, Kathy.
Yes. You have three things. You have an annual report, which I'm required to provide to you, our budget outlook, and our newest partnership with the jail, the jail report. So I'm just going to hit a few highlights of both. So I'm going to start with the annual report. And as you're looking through that, I'm just going to let you know a little bit about our year. I have never known a year that, when working in the field of mental health was so important. The pandemic created a bigger mental health crisis than the world's ever seen, and we are still just starting that. That's, that hasn't even crested yet. So it also created some amazing innovation. We went from having one in four people needing professional help to get through a mental health issue to one in three, that was one in four in a lifetime, to one in three currently today. That's huge. So that's what we're dealing with at our center. But some of the amazing innovation from our staff, I just couldn't be more proud of them. We stayed open. We shifted to mental health. We had to create Zoom rooms inside so that the walk-ins would have a place to safely, to safely go and still get their services. We had nurses who set up a tent on the curb for folks who had COVID, who needed their injections in order to stay out of the hospital and the jail, and of course, stay stable. So... So, they were very innovated. We had community-based staff who provided, who found ways to secure donated cell phones and would, and minutes for patients who didn't have internet access. We had clinicians who filmed educational videos to post on our media site, anxiety, depression, stress management during COVID, how, how toxic stress affects the brain, so that you understand that it's not just human weakness, it, it actually changes your brain We had, we dropped off medication on porches. We even sat a couple iPads on porches covered in plastic while the provider sat in their car outside their home, and they were in their home with the iPad so that our, some of our most at-risk folks could still access. We, so with all of that going on, we renewed our commitment to building a healthier, more resilient community, so that families and friends and neighbors and students and our own acquaintances have the skills to achieve mental wellness in these times of heightened stress, worry, uncertainty, fear, loss, unresolved grief, all these things that they would have had a bigger support system for, but being in isolation has made all that tougher. And now we have devastated families from the flooding on top of that. So one thing is for sure, mental illness like depression and anxiety and many others are not a sign of human weakness. Chronic stress and trauma actually can change your brain, and in essence, rewire the brain, making it difficult to cope with challenging situations. So the best thing that we can do for each other is to be willing to talk about mental health and encourage each other to seek help before it becomes a crisis. Because just like a physical illness, addressing a mental health issue early can result in quicker recovery and less medical bills. So the next page is, is just an arrow that starts at the bottom that just kind of shows you our, our year. The following page are some new things to know about CKMHC, but I'm just going to let you read those. And then to give you the financial summary for the year, you can see our revenue and expenses. And I want you to know that without the COVID relief that we were, from both state, federal, and county, and the grants that we were able to secure together, we were over 1.5 million in deficit and weren't sure how to keep our doors open, and that was all the way till the end of December, when it finally came through. So, it was a very stressful year. We, and, and then in terms of revenue, most of our things are self-sustainable through our insurances, third-party payers, all the things that we do on our own. So the only thing that we ask the, the county for, as a reminder, is just those uninsured and underinsured who, who also don't have the ability to pay but need the help. And then on our expenses, we have an 11% overhead. We, we invest, we reinvest into our staff because we are a service industry, and that's where it should be. Now, we have, when you look at how this plays out, we are out of space due to the demand rising and the clinic that we're developing to adopt integrated care, to bridge substance abuse, mental health and physical health, to coordinate with all our community partners in a much better way to, to look at each patient holistically. So, with that, we are completely out of space and have, are starting to look for resources to figure out, do a needs assessment and figure, figure some of that out. So moving right along, I am going to take you into our budget. Nope, I'm going to just let you know that the jail report I'm not going to cover today, but I'll mention it in here. So looking at our budget outlook, why are mental health services a valuable investment for Salina County? For every dollar invested in mental health, government saves $4 in return. And I, this is something that we just found for 20, the CARE survey that was done in the schools from 2020 to 2021. That's this school, this past school year. 32% of our students surveyed in Salina County seriously contemplated suicide. That's higher than it's ever been, and that's a very sad situation, but that's what we're dealing with. We work with pediatric doctors who are saying they're coming in and they don't want to live, and, and it's, and we've been working with them. So it's, it's, it's a situation that does require a lot of attention. The cost of one suicide to our community is a $1.3 million cost in Kansas. So what have we been doing for Salina County? So in 2019, we were serving more people, we were, we increased access to psychiatric doctors by 12%. We had 169 community trainings and education affecting over 4,000 community residents, and that's getting the word out and helping connect people earlier to help keep costs down. But in 2020, our partnership with the Salina County Jail, with, with Sheriff Solon's help and his staff's help, we focused on reentry, behavioral incidents that are costly, and isolation days. Our estimated savings to the jail last year was $696,000, and that's a partnership all the way, and we're excited about that. So we appreciate the new jail and the opportunity that that brings to, to continue that trend. In 2020, we placed therapists in 10 Salina County schools, and if you look at the outcomes for this, those who are having attendance problems, who joined our program, attendance improved 89%. Academic performance, that's grades, improved 77%. Their behavior improved 85%. Those, that is not us collecting those outcomes, that is the school administrators collecting those outcomes and providing that to us. 100% of the Salina County population, no matter who you were, you didn't have to be a patient, they had access to crisis services day and night, every day of the year. So how has Salina County been funding us? If you look at the chart, you'll see that in 2019 and 2020, there was no increase, and the other times, the, there was a, a small increase for us. And we know that Salina County has done a great job supporting us to the best of their ability, and we appreciate that. What is important to call out is that we use a per capita look, outlook, to look at how that compares to what other counties are providing their safety net mental health system. And the average is $12.58 per capita across the state for each county. So you can kind of see where that compares. And so, just as a reminder, that CKMHC consistently gets excellent outcomes, which defrays cost and other budget areas, such as law enforcement and jail and emergency response, suicidal and preventable death. And our concern is that our bottom line is still affected by COVID-19 this year, and we have received no relief funding. So our concern is to be able to meet those needs of all the citizens who are knocking at our door right now. And, and they're just now starting to get mobile, so like I said, that's not even, we haven't even hit the, the crest yet of that. So, Salina County is at the rate of $5.41 per capita. So if you look at the next chart, you'll see that the, if you go to the darkest gray column, the average Kansas county funding at the $12 level, if Salina County was providing that, that's what that would look like. The, the lighter gray area shows what our board talked about, and they, they are very conservative, they always want to ask the county for the least amount that they can because they know you have other priorities. And I will say that we feel strongly that we need to be conservative, and it's our responsibility to sustain as much as humanly possible while not turning anyone away from services regardless of their ability to pay. So what they came up with this year was that to, to provide the needed current level of services, the minimum will be a 7% increase that we needed to be asking for, and so that would be at $5.79 for our county. So, in addition, and then if you look at the, the non-grade column, that's just where your current funding is now. So it's not a big leap. So again, we're, we're trying to be very conservative and do our part. In addition to asking for this 7%, we do ask for consideration that if there's more rescue relief or relief that comes down to keep us in mind, any one-time relief funding would be very helpful to us right now. And with that, we thank Salina County Commissioners for recognizing the vital role that we play in the overall health of the community and understanding that investing in mental health is also defraying costs in other Salina County budget areas. So we appreciate any support you can give us, and I'm open for questions.
Okay.
Sitting on that board, it amazes me, the numbers of lives that you deal with and success stories that we always received every once in a while at our board meetings. And Kathy, the good news is, my pen, and for Carol, my fellow board member, my pen's still working, so thank you.
Yes, and I neglected to say that Carol's here as well on our boards, so, and Mike's, they are such good advocates for Salina County, let me tell you.
And I have a quick question here, where you talk about placing therapists in 10 Salina schools, are, are those, you actually have a single person in each one of those schools all day long?
In most of them, yes. There are a few where they're not full-time, they, they don't, the need hasn't arisen to that level yet, so they'll be there maybe two days a week or three days a week, like Southeast Salina, I don't think is full-time.
Okay.
But yeah, it's growing to that because as kids came back, we are getting swamped with youth referrals right now, so we are now planning for next year on what the need is.
Does the, Salina, the USD, or, or do they fund any of this at all?
So, we have a partnership with the schools that they provide our offices and our equipment for, at no cost, and the space.
Okay.
And then they also give us year-round access, most of the schools, particularly where they're offering their free and reduced lunches, because that draws them in, so we can continue to work with them over the summer. And we're, so they give us space over the summer to continue the, the mental health part, to get them more prepared for next year to be successful. And then we also have a partnership with them through the Department of Education, and what that does is the Department of Education provides them with a social worker liaison, who is the liaison between our agency and the school. And so it's a great partnership, and that's funded through the state for their, for, for a portion of their liaison and a portion of our uninsured.
And to do this, have you had to hire this many more therapists to go to these schools?
Yes.
So that has been absorbed by all this also?
Yes, and I can tell you that there is a workforce shortage across the state for qualified personnel. And so, the only way we can continue to reach the, but we're reaching kids who were not getting connected to mental health, who the teachers were saying, why isn't, why aren't we doing anything about these guys? Well, whether, whether it was parents' work schedules or whatever, they weren't getting connected with us, so we're connecting with those kids that were falling through the cracks by having them at school and saying, hey, we can do this at school, and that's less pressure on the parents.
Great. I, I just commend you and, and your staff and, and your whole organization for what you're doing here to help these kids get through this time, but also in your conjunction with helping with the sheriff's office and helping those clients there, you know, stay out and get better, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I didn't mention that we've also served more corrections patients this year as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you so much for your support.
Item number four.
A Human Resources Update, Marilyn Leamer, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Now remember, 10 minutes only.
I'm going to. Well, our, the reporting period is mid-March to mid-May, mid-May. The accomplishments that we've done, we have had 11 new hires, seven that have transferred or promoted to different positions, and 12 that are no longer employed. Some of the things that we have been working on, we successfully added the mammogram health amendment to the health plan. We've been working on the 2022 salary and budget benefit projections, participating in negotiations with one of our bargaining units, and then attended some HR-related training. We also had a visit on April 14th from the Kansas Department of Labor that came through and was hitting several of our departments. They stopped when they hit a certain number of concerns, so we do have that report, and the departments that they had stopped at are working on those corrections. July 7 is the due date that that has to be back to the Department of Labor that those corrections have been made. And, you know, some of the things that I did see was, had a lot to do with extension cords, exit signs clearly marked, so I didn't see anything too major on that. K-Work is our workers' compensation pool, they also did a visit, they did with just two departments, and those corrective actions have already been made and returned back. Our plans moving forward, Eric had mentioned the 1,500 vacancies, we're 20 of them. When I wrote this, we had nine corrections officer vacancies, actually have made some job offers, so we've got three corrections officers that are starting tomorrow and one that's starting on June 2nd, so excited to get a few more there on those, but we have a number of other vacancies there. We'll be continuing with the salary and benefit projections and negotiations moving forward. We are still monitoring our health plan. With the last report, we were estimated about 11% increase. We've had claims that have leveled off a little bit, so now we are looking at approximately a 7.2% increase to health and 8.1% increase to dental. This still could go up or down, this is just with six months' worth of claims under our belt. So, you know, we'll hopefully be leveling off a little bit more, but there is the potential for it to go up as well. Our insurance consultants are keeping an eye on that, but they're also marketing stop-loss providers for our self-insured health plan. They're also going to provide an estimate, or an illustration of a qualified high deductible plan, just as an option, just to look at, not necessarily recommending going that direction, but if we need to, as, as a way to curb some costs, that could be an option that we look at. We also had a couple employees that have requested a little bit richer dental plan, and so we've asked them to, our insurance consultants, to provide an illustration and cost if we were to provide, provide like a buy-up plan on the dental. So if somebody wanted to have a little bit higher benefits, of course, that's going to cost, but we would have the employee pay for that extra buy-up plan. We are planning on implementing a prescription program at the next renewal that will provide some savings to our prescription plan, and it has to do with the higher dollar-cost specialty medications. This will allow our plan to take advantage of the manufacturer discounts that sometimes when you see on the commercials on TV, it says, contact the manufacturer if you're having problems paying for your prescriptions. So we're going to try to take a little bit of advantage of that. So, the impact will not affect the employee at all, it will just be taking advantage of those discounts. We do have a tuition assistance policy at this time that provides for tuition reimbursement for job-related higher education. We have shared a draft of that policy with department heads, and it sounds like there is, they are in favor of that. And the, the proposed policy would be that there would be some funds set aside in the budget in a separate tuition fund, and then employees could apply to that fund. It would be subject to approval by the department head and the county administrator. But what that would do would allow employees to improve their education, their skills, but right now, the employees that want to do that, they're subject to the department's budget on training, and many times those departments do not have that extra funding available. So, just wanted to see if you would be in favor of us continuing to move forward with drafting a policy and possibly putting some dollars into the budget where they could apply to that. apply to that.
Is that a consensus-type deal that we would do, or do you want to bring that back to us in a RFA-type of position?
Yeah, we could do that for the policy, and then Phil could do the piece on the budget.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Next blood drive is in June, middle of June. The budget update for HR. Our health plan is running at about 94% of the expenses to funding ratio. It's actually down from the last time I reported it. I'd reported 107%, so it's come down. As I mentioned earlier, our claims are leveling off. Our dental plan is running just a little bit hot still at 112%, and it's actually up from 110% the last time that I reported. And the HR budget is at 32% used, and that's in line with historical averages for our HR operations. That's all I have available for questions.
Any questions or comments? Thank you.
Thanks.
Marilyn. Item five.
Livestock and Expo update. David Flaherty II, Livestock and Expo Director.
Good morning, Mr. Flaherty.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today, I'm just giving an update of the Department of what we've been doing and everything since March, April, and May. Accomplishments on the Expo Center side, our last update, we've done 72 events, nine of them had canceled. Purchased eight cameras. We're looking at capturing some of the remodels of the stuff going on over there to do a timeline on our webpage and the Facebook. We did install, our staff installed LED light bulbs in the 4H building over there to make it a little bit brighter and then to help cut costs on the electric side of it. The director, I spoke at a chamber meeting. I let them know about new contracts and some of our bookings for the future events that we're getting in and trying to bring in. On the weed department side, we had a weed supervisor that resigned, so we did get one hired. We've had 3,902 acres signed up for spring aerial applications. 125 acres of right-of-ways have already been sprayed for bindweed. And then on the farm side, we awarded the two Oliver Hagg scholarships for that. Our plans going forward on the Expo Center side is we're going to look into the lighting in Kenwood Hall, see if we need to put new light system in, or if we can just put light bulbs in to kind of brighten that up and help cut the costs back on the electric side on that. Remodel projects are hoping to be started, and we're going to continue working with and the project manager to get some of that stuff going. And then we're going to continue working on getting in more shows for 2021 and 2022 and so on. On the weed department side, we're going to start inspecting for musk thistle, we're going to continue to spray right-of-ways if the weather lets up. And I need to get a weed applicator hired. We have extended the position out to a person, so we are waiting on their response back. The farm, we're going to continue to work with the leaseholders if they're having any issues on that side. As far as budget update, the Expo, our deposits for rentals were $23,182.50, and the budget of use so far is 31%. On the weed side, the chemical sales are $22,836.81. On the 12th of May, when I did the weedery, the budget used, we were at 13.29%. It has gone up a little bit. I think the other day I was at 24.9, which we had some chemical bills that came in and got paid. The weed special equipment fund, there's $48,090.31 in there. In the farm account, we have $187,968.57. And open for questions if we have.
David, on the budget side of things, and we've had nine canceled events and various ones that, you know, are smaller attended and so forth, what about on the expense side? Do our expenses, have they been staying the same, even though we've still got the same amount of employees and that type of thing? Has our expenses gone down a little bit as far as projections go?
So the projections on the expenses, that's why I'm looking at putting in lighting in Kenwood Hall too, to help cut costs on that. We just got done, middle of April, I believe it was, we just got done with doing 4H, so I should have a report from Avergy on that next bill and kind of be able to look at that.
Okay, I'd be interested in seeing that, you know, to see where our expenses go versus, on the budget side, versus the income, because obviously the income is down and going to continue that way for a little bit anyways.
Correct. And we are actually starting to work, and we're getting more and more events booking back up again too.
David, one question. On the farm account, you show $187,000 and some change. How does that compare to prior years? Is the farm account sustaining, or is it growing? Is it declining? Can you give me some history?
On that side, I haven't really looked a lot.
I'll jump in on that one, Commissioner. It is growing very slowly. If you look at the ending balance for '20 compared to the ending balance for '19, it's up maybe $4,000 or $5,000. So it just, it's, you know, we're kind of keeping it steady, slight growth.
Thank you.
I guess, and I'll ask a question on top of that, and that is, if you could prepare for us at some time here in the near future, what our actual income is on the farm account versus just the amount of dollars that we have in the bank? I'd like to know what the production side, how much money we are actually receiving off of those farm accounts.
Okay. I can do that.
Okay. No, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Item six.
County Administrator's update.
Good morning, Philip.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator. I promise this is the last time I'm going to put American Rescue Plan on my meeting update, and I say that with confidence because I think that next week I will be prepared to bring a contract in front of you for consulting services. Emergency Manager Michelle Barkley and I interviewed a second consultant on Friday. It went really well. Mr. Montoya has reviewed the contract and signed off on that, so I think we are prepared for that. I will also say that now that the guidance has been out for a week, people are much more familiar. So yesterday, I did another webinar on the guidance, and this was much more informative and helpful than any of the ones I've been to in the past. For both good and bad, it seems like as things are becoming clearer, you know, some of the, there may actually be some ways that we could fit into some of the revenue loss, that I thought we were kind of shut out of that by the way the guidance came out. Might be some possibilities of still being a part of that. But on the other hand, there's a lot more limitations on some of the other programs, so I think getting the consultant on board will be excellent to help us start developing the actual plan. I will also say that we did meet with the treasurer's staff last week around just the process for claiming the money. We have not gone on to the portal yet, planning to do that probably tomorrow. We have not been in a big hurry to pull the funds down because one of the issues that nobody seems to have a clear answer for is whether we can put the funds in our regular checking account or whether we need to establish a non-interest-bearing checking account. You may recall, under the Coronavirus Relief Fund, we were specifically not allowed to earn any interest. We think we're allowed to earn interest on the American Rescue Plan funds, but nobody has said directly one way or the other from the Treasury, so. So like I said, we haven't been in a big hurry, but we do plan to get that done. Moving on to legislative update, as I mentioned last week, I was expecting some information from KAC and the League of Municipalities. Seems like the big thing that came out of the wrap-up session for the legislature was Senate Bill 273, or more accurately, the House substitute for the Senate substitute for Senate Bill 273, which created a small business relief plan, which is wonderful, but funded by 35% of counties' American Rescue Plan allocations, which is interesting because that's probably illegal under federal law for the state to direct where those plans go. And more than that, as somebody said, they never touch the funds, so how would they get to them, even if they want them? So that's interesting. Waiting to see what the governor does with that bill. It was enrolled to her on Friday. The other thing that I will mention in terms of a legislative update, we've talked about this one before. This passed so early in the session, it's, we sort of forget that this was this year's legislation, but Senate Bill 13, which changed our budget world, that has become much clearer. I attended the state budget update webinar last Thursday, and they went into exhaustive detail about the impacts of Senate Bill 13, and I think there will be some decisions that I will need the Commission to weigh in on around how you want to move forward with our budget process this summer. So I, it doesn't really change our timeframe right now. I still plan to bring you first look at proposals on June 1, and we'll meet with departments on June 3. But I'll just give you a heads up that because of the Senate Bill 13, I will be asking some questions around how you want to proceed with certain things, so that is what I have for this week, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I have none.
Comments? Are we on comments?
I'll move into item seven now.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep.
This isn't directed towards anybody, but in light of the City Commission's vote last night, how are we going to proceed with meetings and masks and seating? Have we put any thought into that? Does anybody have an opinion?
I for one would like to see the Zoom meetings be suspended. We have no one attending today. It takes a lot of our staff time away, and I don't know if we need to keep Zoom around now, but I'd like to hear from others.
Well, and that was one of my questions this morning, talking to Mr. Allen back there, is that how do we proceed? I mean, by dropping that, are we still going to be able to be on YouTube, or will we still be able to be where it's even televised? So that was one of my questions of how do we move forward, because I am, oh, with Mr. Shadwick, is that, is that, yes?
And Mr. Chair, I know our administrators got some new information as of this morning, and maybe you could share some thoughts or ideas?
Okay.
In regards to like courts and all throughout the building?
Well, there's no new information on courts, because the courts aren't affected by a city ordinance, they are affected by Supreme Court rules. So when Mr. Heitzschmidt was here and spoke last week or the week before, he reiterated that, that masks are still a thing on the third floor regardless of what the city does. So the city's ordinance is technically effective when published, so that's likely to occur either tomorrow or Thursday, well in advance of next Tuesday's meeting. So I, you know, certainly, I don't want to disclose any personal health information of anybody in this room, but I think there are probably a lot of us who would fall under the CDC guidance to remove masks if we so chose. So I could see that. Social distancing is probably still not a bad idea, although, you know, we could probably arrange the chairs such that we could get everybody back on the dais if that's the desire of the Commission.
Yep.
This seating doesn't necessarily bother me. I mean, this is, I mean, there's enough room, as long as the staff still has enough space to present. But if we go back up there, it's fine with me too. I just thought I'd bring it up.
Yep. Yes.
I prefer the social distancing issue part of it as much as anything, and as someone who has received both vaccinations, I'm comfortable with it. I want to be comfortable for everyone else, but the social distancing over time seems to be the major, one of the major things that is important, and the setup that we've got right now seems to be okay with me. I mean, we've got room to do it and, you know.
Yes.
Hang in there.
But I do, I just, I mean, and that's fine, but, I mean, even you go to a lot of places that they say these seats are six feet apart, these are definitely pretty much six feet apart from here to there. I mean, even if we went every other one here, so. But it's, I'm in favor with whatever everybody wants to do, it's like, it doesn't matter to me.
And I neglected to touch on your other comment, Mr. Chair, regarding the television. So the meetings continue to be televised and YouTubed by Salina Media Connection. The Zoom allows us to YouTube them on the county's YouTube channel as well.
Gotcha.
So the city of Salina recently decided to change their arrangement with Salina Media Connection. That's being phased in over a period of time, I think June 30, I believe, is the sort of the date for that. So I do know, I spoke with Greg Stevens and Deborah Cox yesterday. I do know they do plan on coming and doing their budget presentation next Tuesday, and so that might be a good conversation to have with them at that time, although I'm not sure that they have a lot of answers yet, but I know there are some meetings occurring with the city this week, so perhaps by next Tuesday, they'll know a little bit more about that.
Okay. Right. Thank you. Any other comments? As an announcement, I would like to just visit and say that I went to a meeting out at the west of town here Sunday night on the resolution or about the National Heritage Area, and it was, you know, I had been Googling it, finding out more about it and everything else, and I was just shocked at what it is, who it is, and what it is all about. I'm glad I went out to that. It was eye-opening and a lot of information. Once I got into reading, and that's the reason why I asked the lady from, Diana from the Soil Conservation here, a lot of things that they do and provide in this deal is soil conservation here, a lot of things that they do and provide in this deal is exactly what they was talking about, why counties would even want to sign up and go for this when it's already being done by areas and stuff that are out there, and why would, why would any county want to jump in and start providing another tax base or to get even involved with this? And it was very enlightening, so I just wanted to bring that up and say, we need to look at that pretty heavy coming down the road. But anyway, that's just my thought. So any other announcements?
Well, I guess I have a question for you then. What are we going to look at, if you want us to look at it pretty heavily? What are we, are you saying that we should join it, not join it?
No. I mean, just my thought, I would just recommend that the county follow, and I can see why some other counties have signed the resolution opposing the 49 counties in the state of Kansas that are, they're wanting to sign up for this National Heritage, that we should not sign, that we should sign the resolution opposing this National Heritage Association. But that's my thought personally, and just, yeah, looking at it in a little depth of what they are doing, so.
There'll be some more information coming out in a couple weeks.
Well, I've followed it myself, and I'm fully aware of it. It's totally separate from that 30 by 30.
Yes.
This is a, this is an economic development organization that's trying to drive more people into their area to look at, you know, the wildlife or things like that. So at this stage of the game, I mean, to me, there's nothing for us to do. I don't, I think if we just stay status quo, we're fine. Obviously, we don't want to participate. I don't want to participate in it, but...
We need to pass a resolution in opposition then, because...
That's your opinion.
Maybe we can get a legal opinion on that, but it's strongly recommended to pass a resolution in opposition.
But anyway, but that's, I just wanted to bring that up, that we need to, we'll be looking at that again, hopefully, coming down the road. But anyway, any other announcements? Okay, at this time, we'll go into executive session.
Mr. Chair, staff would request an executive session under the non-elected personnel exemption to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for five minutes to discuss appointment of a position, and attendees, in addition to the commission, would be myself and HR Director Marilyn Lemmer.
So moved and reconvened in this chamber at 10:19.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session and come back in this at 10:5, 10:20. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are back in the regular session, and following this executive session, we will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I authorize, or I've moved that we authorize HR Department to hire at a step higher than step four for a position. Do I need to name the position? I don't think so. Okay.
Second, the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the authorization for HR to go above step four. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you all.
Okay. Second executive session that staff would request is under the non-elected personnel exemption to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for a period of 10 minutes to discuss department head performance evaluation. Attendees, in addition to the commission, would be myself and Deputy County Administrator Hannah Stanbach.
So moved and reconvened in this room at 10:38.
Second, the motion.
Has been moved and seconded that we move into executive session and reconvene here in 10 minutes, at 10:28?
38.
38? Oh, yeah, 10:38. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We are back in regular session, and no action will be on this session. Any other comments or announcements?
A question regarding, it says, "Salina County Local Road Safety Workshop." All commissioners?
Yes.
We're invited.
All commissioners were invited to, yeah. And my understanding is that more than two of you will be in attendance, so it will be a public meeting.
Okay. All right. No further business? We are adjourned. Thank you.